Let the June 2021 Brookhaven Borough Council meeting come to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, the deceased residents for the month of May 2021. Shirley Hollenbach. Joseph Kaminsky. Thomas McGowan. Thomas Casey. Robert Ewing. Alfred Whittington Senior. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Willett, would you give us a roll call, please? Mr. Heller.
Present.
Mrs. Fuchs.
Here.
Mrs. Heller.
Present.
Mayor Leslie.
Present.
Mr. Vasquez.
Here.
Ms. Sewicki.
Present.
Pappas.
Here.
Mr. Gilroy. Mr. Wills.
Here.
Mr. Catania.
Here.
Mr. Willett's here. Mr. Will.
Here.
Chief Montella. Chief Zebly.
Here.
Roll call complete. Thank you, sir. Madam Mayor, you have a resolution to present?
Yes, I do. Tonight, I'd like to call up Thomas and Joan Boyle and recognize them for their 50 years of marriage. A resolution of Brookhaven Borough Council, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, honoring Thomas and Joan Boyle on the occasion of their 50th wedding anniversary. Whereas, Thomas and Joan Boyle, 429 Melvin Drive, Brookhaven, Pennsylvania, were married on May 22, 1971, at Our Lady of Charity Church. And whereas, Thomas and Joan Boyle have been residents of the borough of Brookhaven since August of 1984. And whereas, May 22, 2021, marked 50 years of marriage for Thomas and Joan Boyle, whose life together has been a positive influence on their sons, Patrick and Sean, and their grandchildren, Wendy, Sebastian, Claire, Nora, and Brendan, and other family and friends. Now, therefore, Brookhaven Borough Council does hereby extend its sincere congratulations to Thomas and Joan Boyle and wish them many more years of happiness and good health. Resolved this seventh day of June 2021, signed by Borough Council and the Mayor. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor. Is Ms. Ford here? Ms. Ford, you ready?
I am ready.
Good evening.
She's always ready.
Good evening, Ms. Ford.
Right, good evening, everyone. Can you hear me a little better this time?
Yes.
Without the mask, right? All right, good evening, everyone. I'm gonna start off with our million-word readers. Congratulations to Coburn Elementary, million-word readers for the 2021 school year. We're very proud of these students for accepting the challenge by setting reading goals of 1 million words and working toward that goal to achieve it. I'm pleased that Brookhaven Borough Council is also very proud of the effort of our students who have demonstrated achieving their goal by honoring them this evening. Congratulations to the following students: Matthew Simbala, Annabelle Waymire, Carter Rugeri, Jacob Daniele, Tara Rebo Rodriguez, Andrew De Pasquale, Thomas Gold, Anthony Presuzio, Monica Stassel, Ivan Gervin, Ella Cagna, Dylan Pathier, Audrey Habich, and Matthew Shaw. And these students read between 1 million and 4 million words, which is quite an accomplishment. And thank you again to the borough. I know that you put them on the sign or putting them in the newsletter and doing certificates. And hopefully next year, we can have the students at the council meeting. I didn't realize that we were back to full capacity, so I would've invited them this evening, yeah. Yes, we'll get them next time, thank you. And our reading celebration, Coburn Elementary School and students and staff enjoyed a fun-filled reading celebration on Thursday, May 27, to acknowledge reaching our school-wide goal and the students who have improved on reading goals. The culminating event was a good old-fashioned "Take Me Out to the Ballpark" theme. Students and staff dressed for the day by sporting their favorite baseball teams. The day began with an awards assembly, of course, virtual, where certificates and awards for million-word readers, most improved readers, bronze, silver, and gold readers were acknowledged. Afterwards, the students were treated to a Disney movie centered on a baseball theme, of course, and popcorn. A ballpark lunch was provided by our food services, Chartwells, and the PTL provided student baseball raffles that were pulled throughout the day. Fun was had by all, and it was a wonderful way to celebrate our reading accomplishments. Also, our library will be open this summer on Thursdays for our reading counts. Students are permitted to come to the library throughout the summer, and that information will be posted on our website and sent home to parents. This month, we also honor veterans. Coburn students were thrilled to make over 400 cards for veterans who participate in stackup.org. A Coburn Elementary parent is involved in the organization that supports veterans and will ensure that all of the cards are delivered directly to our veterans. Caps for cancer is happening this Friday, June 11. Students will wear caps for cancer. All dollar donations for caps will be collected and benefit a local cancer society. On Wednesday, we will be hosting our Coburn Elementary. We're very excited to host an in-person moving-up ceremony for our 5th grade students. Of course, due to district's safety guidelines, the moving-up ceremony is going to look a little different, but we are excited to host an in-person event for our 5th grade students and families. The school district is still under strict guidelines. We're hoping that soon we get word that, you know, we can get back to a little bit more normalcy. Anyway, but we're still held to the guidelines that were set out previously. Today, we had the Sun Valley High School clapout. Today, Coburn Elementary students and staff were thrilled to welcome the Sun Valley High School seniors for the traditional in-person elementary school clapout. It was really exciting to see our Sun Valley High School Coburn graduates proudly walking the halls of Coburn Elementary in their cap and gown to cheers from all of our students. And of course, the Sun Valley High School in-person graduation is scheduled for tomorrow at Sun Valley Football Field. And you can see PDSD webpage for any updates to that information. It is an outdoor event, and so all the up-to-date information will be posted on the webpage. And again, if you want to see everything that's happening, if you check out our Twitter page, you'll see our reading celebration, of course, and all the other, our cards for veterans and everything else that's happening at our school. You can follow us on CoburnES, and that is it. Have a great evening, and I'll see everyone in September.
Thank you, Ms. Ford.
You're welcome. Thanks. You too.
Is there anyone for public discussion? Who's first? Okay, come on up. Name and address, please. You can join if you like.
Caitlin Bink.
Just tray yourself also. Go ahead.
I'm Caitlin Bink, 4509 Chandler.
And I'm Billy Knoll, 4512 Chandler.
So, we are here because we wanted to open the book again about the speed bumps on Chandler. Your beautiful, non-functioning radar detectors don't work. We love them, they're pretty, but they don't work. They don't slow people down, it's getting worse. I mean, was it this morning we were standing outside, or yesterday? It had to be 70 miles an hour if somebody was going, and that's a daily occurrence. So, we're just really hoping that you guys can get back to a place where we can realistically just tell us, yes, we will look into it, we will try, or no, your parking of the wrong tree, it's not gonna work. So, we just want some kind of transparency.
Sure, where it left off two years ago, three years ago?
Two years.
Was we did an expensive traffic study, it cost taxpayers $12,000 rather than just put in, what I wanted to do was temporary speed bumps, just at least try that. There was a legal question with, if someone, for example, would speed over the hump and cause an accident, could they sue the borough? Because PennDOT would not sign off on it because of the results of the traffic study. I believe at the time, and I still believe, that the chances of that are infinitesimal, at best. Let's face it, I mean, Mr. Wills could probably not find a case study where that's happened. I'm for it, however, I'm also for Trimble. I know that's two of our biggest problems. We would obviously have to poll council, and I think you want an answer tonight. But council now knows what you want. I mean, speaking only for myself, I agree with it. I think two would be necessary. I almost got hit head-on there the other night. Somebody going probably about 50, yep. They're going around that cone at 50 miles an hour.
Oh, if you guys want to put those straight down the street, we're go with that.
That would certainly do it. Yeah, that would certainly do it.
But I appreciate that.
Yeah, I'm warm to the idea of speed bumps, not the temporary.
Yeah, we want something permanent, for sure.
If anyone else wants to weigh in now, or you want to digest it.
Do you know how your neighbors feel about it?
So, two years ago, we did go around with a petition, and we had the majority. This time, we went to any new neighbors, which there's only two new neighbors, and they both did sign. So, we didn't go back to the old ones until we heard from you guys if it was even something that we could discuss. So, if it is something that you need updated signatures, we will start. I mean, we did go to a couple, and they were bored still. So, we thought, well, let's go here tonight, let's see if they're open to this, and if so, we will go back and get, I don't see them saying no this way.
Well, I'm not gonna approve, I wouldn't be in favor of another traffic study, obviously. I'm fine. Aston.
Can you just put that money into the speed bumps?
Sure, well, it's what we should've done two years ago. I don't think we were open enough, and...
We didn't know there really was a traffic study that ever was done, because when we would come, we were never given any kind of straight answers when we would come back to the meeting.
I'm still waiting on my answers, too.
So, we're not holding our breath, then?
No, not on that.
Well, new engineer.
The solicitor and engineer can weigh in. I don't know if they want to speak to it now. They'd probably need time to digest it. I didn't give them a heads up. But, and council will talk about it, so. But I think, I believe Trimble and Chandler, Beth. Again, speaking for myself.
Is there anything on our end for the next meeting, so that when they're prepared, we're also prepared?
There's really not much more to discuss. People are driving too fast on Chandler and need speed bumps. In my opinion, so. And we can't put them on every street in the borough. I guarantee you that, it's too costly. But I believe, again, speaking for myself, that they need Trimble and Chandler, certain parts of Trimble.
I just wanted to weigh in with the chief. Chief, can we actually have additional patrols? Additional patrols, especially, what time, in the morning time? Are we still seeing it in the morning hours?
I mean, yeah.
It's gotta point this.
I don't know if you guys noticed, we had officers stopping cars on Chandler for the stop sign.
We're directly in the middle, so right where they're picking up pace, and then to slam on the brakes at the stop sign, or to just skip it altogether, so we're right in the middle.
He works there in the works.
The stop sign kinda goes hand-in-hand with the speed, because if they're toasting that stop sign, they're up to speed. Our guys have been stopping cars for the stop signs, so.
I personally have not seen that, but that doesn't...
I can vouch as big, they told them about it on mass.
And when Chief Montella comes up, we'll ask him what he thinks as far as the fire trucks going over the speed bumps, if he doesn't mind.
Yeah, just, I mean, recently, I was in Springfield, and I'm right on that Yale Road, which is a major, I mean, I just saw that they were, I thought, I guess, major, not major roads, but, you know, bigger, yeah, cut-throughs.
Sure, Aston identified a few problem streets. They identified a few problem streets a few years ago, and they didn't pay the engineer $12,000 in billable hours to go and do a traffic study. They just did it and risked the legal... Yeah, you're correct, and it corrected the problem, so. The whole thing was mishandled, but whatever, we'll try and...
Well, we appreciate the open minus and, you know.
Okay, and I'll reach out to you, both of you.
Alright, thank you.
Is there anyone else for, anyone else for public discussion?
I just have a question for that. I thought they were gonna do some lines when you go down Coburn Boulevard.
You have to, you have to, you have to come up here, because the camera can't hear you, and you have to legally state your name and address for the record. Not like we don't know. I do apologize.
Jenny McKee, 4302 Mount Vernon Avenue. I thought that at one meeting, they talked about when you go drive down Coburn Boulevard and you turn onto Chandler, they were gonna do some kind of lines.
They did. They were supposed to slow traffic. I think council, the majority of council thought they were kind of ridiculous, especially if you're a resident.
I thought it was just one of those steps that was building up, because I do believe we do need something on that.
Well, I mean, after the first time, it's mostly residents, let's face it. The first time a resident sees that it's a trick, it's a calming effect, there's no physical barrier, they're just gonna go 70 miles an hour the next time. Now, if that's in maybe a more publicly-traveled area, I don't know, tourist area, where you don't have people...
It's a cut through, yeah.
Yeah, I guess it is a cut through.
Because I walked out there at nighttime, even, I mean, last night I was...
I think even, I think even all the locals are gonna figure out that...
My own concern is, because we have so many business trucks with landscaping trucks in the shallow, that was one concern about them, how high do you get them? But I was in a neighborhood in Aston the other day, and they're pretty big bumps, and I'm sure...
That's more a question for Mr. Catania, but yeah, no, I understand. That's why I was gonna ask Chief Montella's a bit.
I know that came up in the prior meeting, too, was the size of the bump in the road.
Is there a problem with the fire trucks going over the speed bump?
I mean, I understand the problem completely. And Hilltop are putting a whole new front suspension on ladder trucks for the speeds. Well, Hilltop is funny, because the new part in the summit is a little more gradual. They got sideways, and they raise, and then they go up another level. So, I understand your problem. My problem is they rip the snow chains off our ambulances. They do a lot of damage to fire.
The speed bumps, the speed bumps do the bumps, are better than the speed here.
I mean, Chuck would say they have to be with PennDOT specs, right?
Yeah, there are, like, it's gradual, and that's why the hump is better over, like, the pillars.
That would be the whole issue, because we do get down, there's no doubt. Council, whether they see the bills for repairs.
Sure, yeah.
It rips tire chains off, and it completely wrecked the motor trucks of the ambulance. There's a lot of suspension, it's something that takes 80,000 pounds constantly, it does damage. I know you guys have issues with that. I see it every day, so.
Okay.
It's all depends on, you know, what the engineer comes up with as far as, you know, legal. I don't think the ones in Hilltop, in the front part of Hilltop, are actually legal. The way, really rocky and on an angle, so everything is twisted all kinds of ways. It's gonna slow you down, it doesn't...
Okay.
It slows us down, too, so.
All right, the short answer, I don't think that Mike picked up the chief, was, yeah, they do generally cause some damage to the fire trucks. Public discussion, sir? Step on up, thanks. State your name and address, please.
Hi, my name's Mike, and my wife Maria, 3728 Arlington Avenue. Terry, thank you for the opportunity to come up here today. I just apologize that the email came in this morning, so I'm sure Mr. Catania hasn't had a chance to look at our issues. I just wanted to revisit them. First of all, thanks for Mr. Catania's help to getting some of the landscaping issues resolved. They came out, took them a while to get back out there, but they did some new landscaping in the back in the swell area, but several problems still exist. Number one, when we were with Mr. Catania, he'd identified that our property lines were not marked properly because of existing fences that are there behind us, if the house is on Gray Street. It's actually a couple inches over on the other side. So, he placed the markers two feet within our property limits. So, we haven't had the surveyor come back out to fix them, and we need some kind of official notification to those neighbors, because they're gonna be like, well, they're not gonna take ours, say, hey, you're basically, you know, your fence is on our property now. We have the new home, the five new homes on Arlington Avenue. So, that's the one issue, with the property lines being corrected. The other issue with the landscaping, when the builder, you know, broke ground, he took all the topsoil off and never brought it back. And now, we have a lot of really bad areas, a lot of dry clay underneath, which we can't, we're having trouble starting our lawns. And I think that's something that, you know, Mr. Catania can revisit with the builder to rectify that situation. There's, you know, it just doesn't, it's not right. I mean, we spent a lot of money for our new home, and, you know, we shouldn't have to go through this. So, there's still some open issues regarding that, and I know all the neighbors are feeling the same way as well. But we wanted to just revisit them. And lastly, we're still waiting for our certificate of occupancy for our home. The last one we had was the interim one, which is kind of deficiency, that's back from October of 2020. And I looked at my list here, and I think everything has been corrected now. We would like, at least for our property, have an official certificate of occupancy. So, those are our issues.
What do you have, Charles?
Property mark, actually, I spoke to his representative today. I spoke to representative from the developer today about some of these issues. We're still holding escrow money, so we're not gonna release any of that money. We're not gonna recommend releasing any of that money. You'll make the decision. We're not gonna recommend any release of that money until some of these issues are taken care of. The property corners are just, he's right, they set property corners, but they didn't put them on the corners, they put them offline. We're not gonna accept that, and he's aware of that. The landscaping, topsoil, not topsoil, what we're obligating the contractor developer to do would be to provide a good grass cover, and it doesn't exist as of yet. So, it's another item that's still outstanding. Certificate of occupancy, we'll check on that tomorrow.
Thank you.
We are in touch with him.
I have pictures of the existing things that I can email you if you want to see.
Yeah, please do.
The grass conditions.
Yeah, and keep in touch with me, and I'll...
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Absolutely. Have a good night, thank you.
Anyone else for public discussion? Going once, going twice? First public discussion session's closed. Chief Montella. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Brookhaven Fire Company's May 2021 Fire Report. We had five fire incidents in the borough, 17 non-fire, 32 calls for mutual aid, four training sessions, total of 58 for the month, 273 for the year. We had $60,000 loss on contents and structure. We had $1,500,000 of property endangered. For the year, we have $1,100,000 loss, and we've had $2,700,000 in the borough property endangered by fire. Our manpower was 58 calls, averaged 13 firefighters, were in service for 679 hours. For the year, 3,773 hours in service personnel-wise. Four training sessions, averaged 29 firefighters, 203 hours of training allowed for the month, 892 for the year. We had the following incidents in Brookhaven Borough. First off, we had a building fire on Memorial Day weekend at the garden-style apartments at Stone Hill Court Apartments. A fire company had a really good stop on a bedroom fire up there. We had six units in jeopardy from the original fire building that was contained to a bedroom. We had a couple residents displaced and taken in by the Red Cross. The loss was kept to the unit, the fire building where it started, and just a slight little bit of water damage in the apartment below. We also had a building fire at Trimble Run condos at 280 Bridgewater Road. We had three automobile accidents, 352 on Whitley Road, 352 in Cambridge, and 108 Trimble Boulevard. We had one gas leak inside at 4337 Zoey Street. Assisted Aston Township Fire Department on a building fire at Worth Hill Road in Aston, and we also had a building fire at 517 Convent Road at Newman College Dormitory. We had an assisted Parkside Fire Company on an accident at 352 in Shelton Road. We also assisted Rocky Run Fire Company on a building fire at 248 Chestnut Street. And we assisted a Chester Fire Department on a second-alarm building. We had two second-alarm building fires in Chester, 343 Lamoken Street and 1121 Thomas Street. We assisted Concordville Fire Company on a working building fire at Hitchcock Lane in Concordville. Our monthly training was fire scene size-up, water supply operations, and ladder operations. Fire Company also submitted a grant to the EMS Foundation for new equipment for all our ambulances at a value of $50,000. We hoping we get that grant for some updates on some equipment. We continue our COVID-19 reports to the council and the mayor. And our ambulance total for May 21, 2021, 212 ambulance calls for the month of May. 125 of them, we transferred, 125 people were transported to the hospital. 130 of them were ALS dispatches, 74 of them were BLS dispatches. So far this year, the ambulance has answered 910 ambulance calls, so they've been busy.
Chief?
Yes.
Congratulations for winning second place.
Yeah, so our...
We had a softball, the Delaware County Fallen Firefighters Softball Tournament was Saturday, and Brookhaven, our team, we teamed up with Lower Chi, and our team came in second place in the tournament, so we made it to the final round.
We didn't get the victory. It's been all Bynum's hitting. Thank you. Chief Zebly.
Good evening.
Evening, council and mayor. May 2021 summary for council meeting as follows. Brookhaven Police initiated or assigned a total of 407 assignments through DOT COM, where the incidents are listed. Three assaults, three death investigations, 10 theft incidents, four fraud reports, one terroristic threat, one narcotic, two public intoxication, two disorderly convicts, one harassment, seven mental health responses. Brookhaven Police investigated 29 suspicious conditions for persons. They also resolved or responded to 28 disturbances or domestic disputes. We also investigated 14 alarms. We responded to six hazardous condition or fire company calls, 19 vehicle accidents, and we assisted 40, we assisted other departments 40 times. In total, 12 adults were arrested, two warrants were served, 50 citations were issued or filed, and 23 warnings were issued. Total lost victims amounts to approximately $12,500. Recovered property amounts are approximately $936. In May 2021, there was no issues with officers and COVID. Stringent COVID mitigation plan and order remains in effect and will so indefinitely. Officers have opted, most officers have opted to receive the vaccinations. One officer, Officer Freed, is nearing the completion of the FTO program, and will be on the schedule in a couple weeks. Officer Roller and Officer Trevor Johnson were hired and sworn in in May as part-time police officers, and they have begun the FTO program. I'll take a minute to discuss fireworks law, because this will be 4th of July coming up. Our ordinance incorporates Pennsylvania law, and there's plenty of restrictions on fireworks. It's just not a free-for-all with fireworks. We need residents to know this. They are restricted to consumer-grade only and not to be discharged within 150 feet of any structure meant for occupancy. That includes businesses that people can go into and shop, or residential homes. Fireworks cannot be discharged on any public property such as streets or parks. So, if you are lighting fireworks in the middle of the street, you're in violation of the law, because it's public property. It can only be, fireworks can only be discharged by an adult who is not under the influence of drugs or alcohol. of drugs or alcohol. And also the, our ordinance includes, um, the noise ordinance at 10:00 PM. So, uh, in addition to that, um, they cannot be discharged from a vehicle or aimed at any vehicle or structures. We asked that the very few places that you can actually light fireworks, because I really don't know any property whose yard is more than 100.
There's none.
There are really none. Um, you will be in violation of the ordinance and state law. You will be cited.
There's probably none in the entire borough.
Yeah, maybe one, maybe, I don't know. But, um, if you are in, in, in compliance with the ordinance, uh, you still should be considerate of your neighbors, uh, that have.
And their dogs.
The dogs that will, we get a lot of calls about the dogs suffering from anxiety and.
People with PTSD.
PTSD, got it. Um, and we will have extra officers on 4th, 4th of July, the whole weekend, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, to address any issues, so. Uh, for training for the month of May, Officer Wetten conducted training and qualifications at the firing range, uh, for on-duty weapons, uh, for Officer Barth Wetten himself and Officer Havick. Uh, Officer Wetten attended SWAT training. I, I attended, uh, 80 hours of police executive development training, uh, through, virtually through Penn State. Uh, Officer Eastman completed 16 hours of mandatory in-service training. Uh, in total, approximately 112 man-hours of training were completed by officers in May. Uh, also this month, or actually this week, uh, we have two officers, uh, scheduled for training for, um, through the DUI Association for Standardized Field Sobriety Testing. I would like also to say a, uh, job well done to Officer Wetten, Jenkins and Fareed with their response to a building fire at Stone Hill Apartments, uh, that we had on Memorial Day weekend. Uh, from my understanding, uh, officers entered the building, um, where there was an active room and contents fire of a bedroom, um, and the building was filling up with smoke. Without personal protective equipment, as the building was filling up with smoke, they went inside to evacuate residents on, on the upper floors and assisted them down. Um, I actually got a letter today from a resident, um, that I'll read to you. Dear Chief Zebly, I'm writing to you regards to your police department. I live in Stone Apartments and watched your men run into a burning building. Do not tell me police are not here to protect and serve. They are brave and proud, and I'm proud to live in Brookhaven. Sincerely, Dorothy Horton.
Great job.
So that was received. Uh, also would like to make a mention of a job well done to Detective Havick. Uh, he spearheaded a grant, um, the last couple of years, and we finally got the, uh, purchase and installation of new top-of-the-line computers for the police vehicles. Uh, we received $32,000 worth of computer equipment for free from, through the grant. Uh, also like to thank Chief Montella and, uh, Fire Company for allowing the police department to host a defensive tactics training, uh, control tactics and use of force training class uh, in September at the firehouse. Uh, this training will certify officers in becoming defensive tactics instructors for their departments. Brookhaven Police will be able to send two officers for free to receive this training because we are hosting the class. Uh, it's a $1,500 savings just for hosting the class. Uh, the training will be provided to officers in the departments. The training will be, uh, provided to officers in departments for use of force and, and control tactics, uh, which is now mandatory per, uh, Act, Act 58, I'm sorry, Act 59, um, for, uh, mandatory in-service training. Uh, it will be cost-effective to have in-house trainers to train and certify officers within departments. So we'll, we'll get two in-house trainers. Um, and, uh, it looks like lastly, um, please follow, uh, follow us on Facebook for any announcements, posts and updates for community and police information.
Thank you, sir.
Chief, can I ask you a couple of questions?
Sure.
I, I see in your, uh, in your report here that we issued 50 citations. Was that a detail?
Uh, just officers, um.
Randomly doing?
Randomly doing traffic at my request. Uh, as we receive complaints, we receive complaints, um, uh, for school buses near Trimble, uh, Trimble Run. Uh, in Cambridge Square, we received, asked for, uh, keep officers to sit on a stop sign there. Um, and the, um, Mount Vernon and Chandler, some as well, so.
Okay. If I could ask you to do this next time around, to break the citations down.
To what violations?
Yeah, with the violations, because we're spending money for the, uh, for the, actually have the stopwatches, you know, for speed control. You know, we still have a speed control bound on Chandler.
Yeah.
If, if we could break it down. Is there any chance we're going to have officers assigned to that, to a detail down there rather than just asking them to randomly during their tour of duty, set up and?
I think, I think it's possible once we get, we have a few in, in the FTO program.
Okay, but you and I know that you can do your own speed detail, you know, I mean?
Yeah.
Just by operating the stopwatch by yourself. You don't need two guys down there.
The stopwatch, I think we'll have to revisit the, um, get the line certified, um, painted and certified for the aerobics, for the stopwatch.
Okay, and we still have, we still have the N-RAD, right?
Uh, the N-RAD is a operation because you have to have more than one person on it. So that would be a detail. The aerobic stopwatch can be one, one person doing that without.
Okay, I, I'm only trying to address their problem again.
No, you got it.
I'd be honest, I'm tired of hearing about it, really, to be honest with you. I don't live down there, but I'm tired of hearing about it. It's, it's a simple solution. You and I know it's a simple solution.
Well, the issue with the stop sign, it was, uh, they, they sat on the stop sign because if they're not stopping for that stop sign, like I said, they're, they're already making up the speed.
Yeah, sure.
They've been addressing the stop sign and that's synonymous with the.
Can I ask you a quick question? Who's in charge of changing these batteries up? Because the ones on Chandler have not been working for quite some time. Not even on.
I, I've been all certain, uh, working on it. Uh, we, we actually have a grant in progress too for speed time, uh, speed, uh, signs. Uh, looks like we'll probably need more new batteries for that, so. I'll work on that.
But aren't the batteries charged up by the sun or do we bring them back to the station?
There are some that are solar powered.
Ours aren't solar, right?
Are not solar.
The ones on Chandler aren't batteries, so. Uh, and I'll, I'll look into them first thing in the morning to see what, get to with that, so.
And just to touch on that, George, um, I did put a copy in all council's mailbox of the citations that have been given out.
For Chandler?
Not for Chandler, for in general, from all of our offices.
I was just in my box, I didn't see anything.
I put it in there. What morning was I in here? Friday morning?
I don't have it, I only had two pieces.
Did you guys get it?
I haven't looked yet.
I'll look after it. Okay. It was put in Friday morning, a copy of all the citations.
All right, moving right along. Mr. Will.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President, and good evening, ladies and gentlemen. A copy of the solicitor's report is on file with the Borough Municipal Building. Uh, some of the more salient issues contained in that report are as follows. Number one, with regard to Arbor developers, that is the two-lot residential subdivision on Zoor Street. The developer has executed the developer's agreement and municipal public improvement security agreement and paid all fees to the borough for construction activity to commence. Second issue concerned Brookhaven storage. Again, a new developer has filed revised land development plans with the borough for a self-storage facility on a 2.4 acre property of undeveloped land on the south side of Brookhaven Road. Uh, last month, uh, the zoning hearing board had denied the developer's request to permit a three-story building in excess of 35 feet. That was actually during the month of April, and it was as a result of that zoning hearing board decision that was the impetus behind the developer filing revised land development plans that are now in conformity with the zoning ordinance. The Planning Commission is scheduled to review those revised land development plans at its meeting on June 15th of next week. I will be in attendance at that meeting. Another issue I have concerns the Popeye's land development. This is whereby the developer seeking to redevelop the former TD Bank Building located at 4236 Edgemont Avenue. The, the developer did obtain conditional use approval from Borough Council at its meeting last week on June the 2nd to permit a fast food restaurant with drive-through. The developer, however, is obligated to obtain multiple variances from the zoning hearing board at its meeting that is scheduled for tomorrow, June 8th, in this very room at 7 o'clock PM, and the public is invited to attend. With regard to the residences at Brookhaven Glen, this is, of course, our 55 and over community located off of Radio Lane and Edgemont Avenue. I have two resolutions for Borough Council's consideration, uh, basically authorizing a partial escrow, uh, release for the completion of certain public improvements. The first resolution is actually a resolution that authorizes the fifth partial escrow release of public improvements in the amount of $248,663.68. This particular escrow release has been reviewed by the borough engineer, and the borough engineer has recommended approval of that particular escrow release. And so if it is the pleasure of Borough Council, a motion would be in order to adopt that resolution.
Who wants the motion? Janice has.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any questions? Any opposed? Motion carries.
We also have a second resolution for Borough Council's consideration. Again, authorizing a sixth partial escrow release for the completion of certain public improvements. That escrow release, uh, again, uh, is in the amount of $268,767.12. Likewise, this particular escrow release has been reviewed by the borough engineer. The borough engineer has likewise recommended approval of this partial escrow release. And again, so if it is the pleasure of Borough Council, a motion would be in order to adopt said resolution.
Second? Anyone?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Aye. And finally, as Borough Council is aware, and no doubt our public is aware, some 15 months ago, this borough declared an emergency disaster as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic. The borough has been operating under a declaration of emergency disaster for the past 15 months. The resolution for Borough Council's consideration this evening would terminate the declaration of emergency disaster proclaimed by Borough Council back on March the 19th of 2020. And I will briefly read this resolution into the record. Whereas on March 13th of 2020, due to COVID-19 pandemic, the Honorable Michael Hess, former mayor of the Borough Brookhaven, issued a declaration of emergency disaster pursuant to the authority vested by 35 PA Consolidated Statutes Annotated, Section 7501B and the Pennsylvania Borough Code, Section 1006A Subsection B. And whereas approximately one week later, on March 19th of 2020, the Borough Council, the Borough Brookhaven declared, joined and extended the declaration of emergency disaster issued by former Mayor Michael Hess, again pursuant to the provisions of Section 7501B of the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Services Code uh, and the Pennsylvania Borough Code, Section 1006A Subsection B. And whereas the transmission, spread and severity of COVID-19 has been greatly diminished as a result of the mass vaccination efforts and mitigation protocols. And whereas the threat of imminent disaster to the health, safety and welfare of the citizens of Brookhaven Borough has been significantly reduced. And whereas the introduction and implementation of additional emergency response measures are no longer necessary to respond to this public health issue. Now therefore be it resolved, we, the Borough Council of the Borough Brookhaven, hereby terminate the declaration of emergency disaster formerly proclaimed by borough officials back on March the 13th and March 19th, 2020. Mr. President, if it is the pleasure of Borough Council, a motion would be in order to adopt such a resolution.
Who wants it?
I'll take it. I made a motion.
Who wants the second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Very well. Other than that, Mr. President, I can report general progress.
Thank you, sir. Adam Mayer.
Good evening. I only have, um, two items on my agenda, and the first one is that I had the pleasure of swearing in our newest officer on Friday, June 4th, Trevor Johnston. And we want to wish him good luck and welcome aboard. And the other one was just echoing what the chief said in regards to a job well done to Officers Wetten, Jenkins and Fareed for their quick response at the fire at Stone Hill. Other than that, I'm done.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few things. I need a motion to approve the May 3rd, 2021 council meeting minutes.
Make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Carries? Need a motion to approve the May 24, 2021 council workshop minutes.
Make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I have a banner update. We've had a lot of questions about down banners. We still have 25 banners down. They are on hold, particularly on the state streets because we are waiting for the receipt of our bucket truck, which is now due in, in August. So I do hear you. I can't answer all the emails, quite a few emails from and messages, but they will go back up once the truck is in. And as for the auto show that was rescheduled to this Saturday, June 12th, with a rain date of June 13th, we now have, I think, a 60% chance of rain for Saturday, so. Sunday looks clear. We're going to get this damn car show going one of these times. So look for us, uh, look, look to social media for the announcement and the weather update. Hopefully Mother Nature will, uh, let us get it in Saturday. If not, Sunday looks great. I have three execs to announce. We have Councilman Executive Session Monday, 5:24, 8 to 8:45 PM, the topic being personnel. Tuesday, 6:121, 6:15 to 8:00 PM. Again, the topic was personnel, and we're going to have a brief executive session after tonight's meeting. Topic will be speed humps. Sorry for late notice, council. Deal with it, it'll be quick. I want to give Mr. Willward here, uh, Treasurer Delilah McDate and Councilwoman Sawiki a, uh, a kudos for getting the, uh, rescue funds application in. I believe we were notified on Thursday that the rescue funds were only available to those that applied, those municipalities that applied, when we were originally told that they would be received without any further action. So we received an eight, an email late Thursday with a due date of Monday, which is absolutely ridiculous, and I think the application packet was about this thing. So they got it done today, they got it in. And as the public knows, we received $800,000 from the American Rescue Act or Plan, whichever it's called, $400,000 this year and $400,000 next year. So great job to the three of you.
Thank you.
I know, I know. And, uh, I don't know if the other municipalities got the same notice. I think everyone was notified at the same time, but it was, uh, you know, pretty stressful, but we, we got it all done. Going to the council reports, Ms. Sawiki.
Yes, thank you. I do want to add to what, um, the president said. I really want to give John and Delilah so much credit because they really, as soon as they got the information of what needed to be done, they just went right to it full speed ahead, and we really appreciate it. I was able to assist them to some degree, but they really did a wonderful job. And we really appreciate it because they are two very valued employees.
We'll hold off on their pay cuts till next year.
Thank you. Yeah, I do have the bill list for June, which I do want to, to.
Now, I do have the bill list for June, which I do want to read. The general fund amount is $68,915.50. The road fund is $754.02. And we have sewer fund, $35,014.8. And trash fund is $1,500. So the total for the month of June is $106,181. So I do want to make a motion so we can pay those bills tomorrow.
Who's got the second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you again, Janice, for your work on that, working with John and Delilah. Mrs. Fuchs.
Thank you, Mr. President. The ordinance committee did not meet in May. As of now, we are scheduled to meet on June 17th at 7:00 PM. Initially, we were meeting at 6:30. It created a problem for some of our members, so I'm going to suggest to the committee that we bump it up to 7:00 PM. And if they're okay with that, then we'll put some notices out, so that everyone knows they want to attend the meeting. I continue to work with Matt Koppel to get Hilltop Drive and Whitley Road cleaned up in terms of landscaping and obstructed views. I had a resident take me up along Hilltop Drive and Whitley and show me some areas, and I totally agree with him that we need to contact the people that own those properties and get it cleaned up. The Providence Animal Center, the Providence Animal Center's chipped vaccination clinic that was scheduled for September 7th is canceled. I would suggest if anyone wanted to take their pets to get vaccinated or chipped, that they go to the Providence Animal Center's website for other locations and times. The Concert in the Park series will kick off on June 19th from 5:00 to 8:00 PM at Eaton Park with a performance by LSD, which is Jim LaPera's band. That should be pretty interesting. We hope that everyone can attend. Let's see here. We are working on an electronic newsletter, and that will be finalized within the next few weeks. Once it is finalized, it will be on the website, and copies will be available in the Borough Office for those that may not have a computer and won't be able to view it online. We'll let everyone know when it's finished and post-op. Now, I just had a call with BNL Trash Company today. There's an issue with the dump that they take the trash to, so if they don't get around to picking up everybody's trash on Wednesday, do not take your trash in. Leave it out, and they'll be around on Thursday to pick it up. That also goes for recycling. So if anything is not picked up, leave it out, and they'll get it on Thursday.
Where's the issue? Cavanta Plant?
He didn't say. He just said the site's in Delaware County. Yeah, there's a delay, and then by the time they turn it around.
It's waste management as well.
Yeah. So because of that, it's, there are other towns that they collect trash for. They're all backed up with that, which is going to affect us.
It's not just residential, it's commercial.
I see.
Yeah. So do not take your trash cans and leave them out, and they'll get them on Thursday. That's all my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Fuchs. Mr. Vaskus.
Question. Does the public want to ask questions during the reports?
Generally, no. We have a, we have a public discussion session at the beginning and the end of the meetings. We'll close with another public discussion session. Is it trash-related?
No. Mr. Commissioner Sawicki, about the $400,000, will that reduce our taxes?
Save it, save it for the end of the, of the meeting. You're only about 10 minutes out or so. Depending on how long the rest of these, these folks go. Mr. Vaskus.
Thank you, Mr. President. As our solicitor, Mr. Jay, Jay Wells, touched on the zoning hearing board meeting about the Brookhaven Storage last month, and again, with the meeting tomorrow at 7:00 PM. Yeah, it's on. I have no new, new, yeah, no new news for zoning hearing board. For Public Works, we had three sewer backups, one backup at the rear of 3515A Edgemont Avenue. Our new sewer jet machine has been putting in some work, clearing lines. We had one done there. The second one was done at Janey Avenue at 3436. The issue is on the homeowner. They were advised to call a plumber. The third issue was at Morrison Janey. Right at the intersection, we used our jet machine to clear the line. Now things are flowing the way they should be. We're working on trying to get ahead of our issues with our lines and using that sewer machine to clean whenever we have a free chance. So we cleaned, we cleaned four sections of sanitary sewer mains on two different streets. Our year-to-date total is 70 sewer main sections that have been cleaned on 24 streets. There's a report of a noisy sanitary sewer manhole cover in the 4700 block of Chandler. A temporary fix will be addressed when we get a chance. The Public Works Department assisted Dukes with locating and opening some manhole covers that they're doing some work on for us. We have two sinkholes on Whitley Road in the area of Storm Dream Inlets. Both were backfilled and fixed. So the, there was a water leak at 328 Melvin Drive. The leak was from the neighbor's house. Code enforcement and the engineer's office have both been notified. At the 4300 block and 4200 block of Schoolhouse Lane, there have been several water leak calls on the street. All these issues were reverted back to the Chester Water Authority. They're not our issues. Down at the parks, some electrical issues that we had that were presented to us by the counselor are being addressed at Memorial. The list is almost completed. The Plexiglas Shield was replaced at Memorial after the last two were broken. The swings in Somerville Park were lowered. The fall zone areas were built up with wood chips and finished with a certified playground mulch. Security cameras were updated with new equipment by M2 Memorial. We added some tamper-proof cleave hooks on the swing sets, so we can stop people from adjusting them how they feel fit. That way, it's fair for all the little kids to be able to get up on the swings. And then, just in closing, the second quarter chipping is completed. Forty-seven houses. Year-to-date total is 70. The Public Works Department went out, planted flowers on all the street islands in Borough Hall. PA One Call tickets, it was 48. The year-to-date total is 202. New street signs were installed at Church and Maple. While we had the temporary banner truck and utilizing some of the, or bucket truck, not banner truck. We have 38 hometown banners reinstalled and ladders, using ladders to help that as well. New flags were installed at Cambridge Island and the walking trails for Memorial Day. Two recycling cans were delivered. If you need any additional cans, please contact the office. We'll get you some more cans. And there was one complaint at 200 Maple Ave for overgrown bush. Code enforcement was notified. And the department also conducted two hours of hands-on training and four hours of virtual training for the month. One hour was chipper operation and maintenance, one hour on manhole guard and rail protection, and the four hours of virtual training was conducted by Gallagher. And that is the end of my report.
Thank you, Mr. Vaskus. Mr. Pappas.
My committees don't have anything to report to. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Heller.
Thank you. The Parade Committee is going to meet this Wednesday, the 9th, at 7:30 in this building, in this room. So if anyone wants to attend the Parade Committee, please come out. We will have our Technology Committee meeting will be held this Thursday, 6:10 at 7:00 PM. That will be held in the community room. We'll be talking about live streaming and how we can make that happen for this room, the gym, as well as the community room.
Let me, let me interject that it would be live streaming with live, remote, public interaction also, and I did reach out to M2 Technologies for assistance on that, and he will meet with one of us one day this week. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
That's okay. The Red Board met this past, two Thursdays ago. Mrs. Fuchs already talked about the concert and the series, the first one being this, what, the 19th in Eaton Park. It's free, so please come out with your families. It's a nice time. Again, it's free. I wanted to have a huge shout-out to baseball. They had their closing ceremonies this past Saturday. It was a beautiful day. I want to thank the Fire Department, the Police Department for providing a safe passage for the fires and their families. They left from Memorial Park and they went to Durkin Park. It was a beautiful, beautiful ceremony. All the T-ballers got these cute, adorable little medals. They were so cute. I wish my kids were that age again. But I wanted to, I wanted to say a huge, huge thank you, a huge shout-out to JR and Sandy D. Perjettow. They put in so much time and effort these last few years for the baseball league. I want to thank the baseball board, as well as the coaches, the players, the volunteers, the businesses that helped sponsor, because again, without all those help, the teams wouldn't be able to play. The baseball league did an amazing job with keeping with COVID safe. JR stated that no games were canceled for, because of any players getting COVID. So again, a huge shout-out, because that goes for the coaches, the players, and the parents for making that happen. So thank you for, for that, and we look forward to it next year. And we have the Family Day. We have our next meeting on Wednesday, the 16th, at 7:00 PM here. So anyone that wants to volunteer to come out and help, please come to the meeting, because it does take a lot. And we did send out our business letters to all the businesses in reference to the concert series and the Family Day events for sponsorship. So if you would like to donate, please contact Tom Dykes, and he can give you all the information. I want to, since we won't be meeting until the end of June, I want to wish all of our fathers a happy Father's Day on June 20th, so please make sure that you take that day for yourself. And lastly, I want to wish all of our graduating classes between preschool, between 5th grade, 8th grade, high school, colleges, and university, all the ones that are graduating this year, 2021, it's been a rough year. They've done an amazing job, and we wish them all well in their next chapters of their life. So that's the end of my report.
Mr. Gilroy is away on business. Gives us, Mr. Catania.
Thank you, Mr. President. I submitted my written report. There's two informational items I want to mention. I have one question, and I have one item for council consideration. The two informational items, at 315 Westbrook Haven Road Development, the ownership of that strip of ground between the development and existing houses is still being worked on. I did meet today with Public Works to show them the limits of the, what was Lot 8, which is the lot which is deeded over to the Borough, and also that 30-foot land that's in question so they could maintain those, those pieces of ground. The 2021 Street Reservicing Program, we awarded that contract to AF Damon Company. They're tentatively started, tentatively planning to start work the week of June 21st. And then, the, the traffic study was done. Who would be able to get me a copy of that?
I can check my email if not.
I might have it too.
You'll have to reach out to Ms. Mulvaney.
All right. And then, the item for council consideration was at, at the sewage treatment plant. One of the blower motors failed, and we had to purchase a replacement. We asked council to ratify the purchase, the replacement of the blower motor, amount of $1,490.
I'll take it.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Carries.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Catania had a question for you. Westbrook Haven Road, where they dug up the street?
Yep.
There is a part, I thought it was going to blow out my tire. It's such a bad hole right there. Can we get someone to fill that in?
Yes.
Okay.
They were supposed to, they told me they filled it in on Saturday. They didn't. So we called them again today, told them he's going to be out there today. When I get done this meeting, I'm going to drive back down there and see. If not, we're going to fill it tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I'm going too fast. Mr. Leslie, sir.
Okay, just a couple of items here. Dico has a third-party contractor finishing up those, moving the gas mains to the outside, the meters. About 20 houses to do. Coco's inspection, that pushed again on the structural till next week. Citizens Bank, the remodeling is going well up there. And like the chief said, we had an accidental fire up in Stonehill. Nobody was injured up there, which is a good thing, and the fire company had a good stop on that. It could have been devastating. So, and again, apparently the cause and origin was on Facebook before the fire was out, just like the Coco's fire, and it was wrong. Thank you.
It's always arson, yeah. Are they doing the whole exterior of that Citizens Bank?
Excuse me?
Are they doing the whole exterior of the Citizens Bank?
Just that front parcel there where the steps are. Total gut out inside.
Oh, they're not doing the whole exterior?
They are not.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. That's the end of my report.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Gavin, you have a report?
No, Mr. Wells already took care of.
Okay.
Vice President, so we're.
It's good to have you, anyway. Let me give a quick shout-out to JR D. Perjettow. I don't, I don't think we, we. I don't remember how many years he was here, since, a long time, but, yeah, yeah, he's been here a while. He does a great job, and I don't know who's going to take over, but I hope there is as good as JR was, so. Good job, JR. Brings us to the second public discussion session. Would you like to step up, sir?
Yes, sir.
Just state your name and address for the record, please.
Peter Messiris, 603 Marshall Road.
Good evening.
Hello, Mr. President and Madam Mayor. I did have the question about the taxes. Will they be reduced for next year, or based on this grant?
I, I can answer that question, sir.
Well, I would prefer to answer the question, since I have to do this.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Today, we did file with the state the application that we talked about earlier. We will be getting two, two checks. The total is $842,482.48 in two installments of $421,241.24. You have to understand that we had a reassessment last year, okay? As far as the Borough was concerned, when there's a reassessment, the state prevents us from ever raising taxes that year. Not that we were going to, but we're prohibited. And our, our revenue has to be neutral, which means the amount of money we collected from real estate taxes in 2019, 2020 has to be the same as 2021. So we're still working with that. Plus, we're working with the fact that EIT, which is Earned Income Tax, the Business Privilege Tax, and Mercantile will be, I anticipate them to be lower, because people were out of work last year. Businesses, 47 businesses were closed for some point during the year. We now have, the taxes got the extension till the fall, so people that would have filed May 17th are now filing three months into the future. So we still don't have our revenue for the year. And I'm anticipating we will be fine, but this money is really going to be earmarked for projects that council has that will help the budget, because things that we need, that council is planning to do, will be used with this money and not general money from your taxes. I don't anticipate it.
Is it unrestricted? Is it a grant, and is it unrestricted?
Well, it's, well, it's, it's, it has basic, like, revenue for, can be used for, like, the police salaries for, during COVID, and we had some employees that were working during COVID, but things like that, and other items that we need to do. I mean, we can spend.
We should be reimbursed for the police salaries, though.
Yes, that, that's from this we are going to date. We're going to fill it in with the exact numbers. I don't, I can't tell you right now.
That doesn't come from the rescue.
No, but that's part of the money we can reimburse.
On top of, we got a straight $800,000, right?
Well, you, but you should have to tell them what you're using the money for.
Okay, I see.
See, that, and that's part of the, what we, what we can do.
Yeah.
And I, Delilah was going to work on what the exact amount of money from last year was. She has to, she's been so busy with a lot of stuff. I asked her this afternoon, can she, in the next couple of weeks, get me the total number so council will have it? Because she just didn't have it or fingertips.
Yeah, no, it's not easy.
The payroll is the kind of thing where this, you know.
No, no, I know.
It's a lot, really, because when you're dealing with police officers. But I anticipate we should be okay. I mean, we're not anticipating a tax increase, but I just, I've been telling council all year, we really have to watch our pennies, because when you watch the pennies, the dollars take care of themselves. We all know that. But the whole point is, we should be okay. But I, you know, I'm very cautious. That's how I have to be, because I don't know. Until, I don't know if some of my earned income tax might come in lower than we thought, but we won't know. And I told Delilah, we're not going to know till the fall, when people send their returns in, and then the tax collector sends us the checks. And only when the money is in our bank account do I know what we really have. And I, and I don't like to assume it's going to be high, lower. I mean, I think we're going to be okay, but we still. it's going to be high, lower. I mean, I think we're going to be okay, but we still have to watch what we spend. That's why some of the bigger expenditures, I did talk to the president tonight about making sure that some of them are used from this COVID money because then we're not touching the money from the general fund and using that for our normal expenses. Because we do have a couple of things that we have to deal with in the town that are larger.
Okay, somewhat related, with all the new businesses in Brookhaven, has that increased your revenues substantially?
No, because last year, some were out of business.
Going forward, going forward.
Forty-seven were out of business.
Chilis, Chick-fil-A, they were big. Freddy's, Freddy's is big.
Yeah, but we're, you know, we won't be getting that money for quite a while, when they do the contracts for next year.
Certain, certain businesses, Chilis, Chilis was hit hard. Smash Burger was hit hard. More dine-in than takeout. Chick-fil-A saw reduced numbers, but not, not like other businesses. People just don't stop going to Chick-fil-A. Freddy's was the same way, drive-through. They closed their, they closed their, they can rely on the drive-through for the revenue, but this, this isn't speaking to the center room. So they weren't impacted. And we don't know how much the increased revenue from the wild business that, business that the supermarkets did will make up for some of the businesses that were closed temporarily.
Do they remit their taxes annually for the mercantile tax?
Yes, they all do.
And then, how about the EIT? Is that remitted quarterly?
That's, well, it comes in quarterly. You file it with the collector, and then we get the money after they, if the money clears, they're back, then they send it to us. But we, it comes in slowly during the year. So we really don't know to the fourth quarter how much we really have or what we, you know. Hope, I'm keeping my fingers crossed because I think we'll be okay, but you never know. We've had a real, a pandemic is very hard to try to work your way out of because a lot of people were laid off for some period of time, and some of the businesses were closed for a short period of time. And I know the grocery stores were very busy, but some of the other ones were not as busy. So we're really being very cautious.
Same thing with EIT. Some, some people made a hell of a lot more than they did non-pandemic.
Exactly.
And in certain industries, mortgage for one, others got crushed. So it, I don't know if they'll balance out or not.
Well, we're still...
Janice will tell us that when she gets on.
That's what I'm saying. We won't really know to the third or fourth quarter. But we'll keep the advice. I'm just, the numbers really aren't in yet.
With the home sales, the home prices have really gone way up. I imagine the transfer tax will...
We won't really know that till probably September because it's not in yet. It comes in within like two months of a sale, but...
Okay. I have another issue with the intersection out of Burger King onto Cambridge Road.
I've heard that before.
Many times, somebody will just block the intersection, so you can't go for, straight to make a right or a straight. So I don't know what you have planned.
No easy fix.
Yeah. It's a private road. Is that a private road?
Yeah, Burger King owns, Burger King owns that lot, yes. That's not, it's not technically a road. It's actually a parking lot, right?
They're going to sign up for this.
Yeah.
I hope they all go to Popeyes to alleviate some of the pressure.
Okay.
Unfortunately.
I don't know if you're planning like flashing light or anything like that.
We've had a few complaints about it, but I don't think there's really much of a fix there, to tell you the truth. But it's a nightmare when you drive through there. I agree.
Okay, thank you. I have another main issue that I'd like to bring to attention of the council. My wife had an ambulance response on April 30th. And I'm sorry, Mrs. Leslie, I called you, but...
I got your phone message this afternoon, and I forwarded on to the fire department who takes care of that. So we would be to speak to their...
I was waiting for your response, but since the meeting was tonight, I thought I would come and address my issue. When we dial 911 for an ambulance, we're expecting Brookhaven. And I have the solicitation letter here. And, you know, if you have a medical emergency and if you donate in the past, we thank you. They provide lifesaving equipment, supplies, training, maintenance, that sort of thing. I've been donating for thirty-eight years. I've been a Brookhaven homeowner for thirty-nine years. And I got a bill from Crozier, and I wasn't expecting this. So I called our ambulance corps, talked to a very nice man, Jacob. He told me he was an EMT. He explained how it works. And he said that it was, it was a, it was a heart issue. And they, they did transport her to Riddle. But, and so he said, we're not sending you a bill. Brookhaven's not. But now, Crozier, I have a bill from Crozier. We have insurance. So it went to my deductible. And I don't think I should have to pay it after, you know, supporting it every year.
I assume it's an extraordinarily high amount, right?
It's not. It's not an extraordinarily high amount, but it's really, it's the principle of it.
I understand.
Sir, I believe the fire chief can address you.
Let me come up and, uh... I'm the fire chief, so I'm not the billing guy, but I'll try to explain how this kind of works. So you got a bill. Did we transport you to hospital?
Yeah, but Jacob, the EMT told me.
Yeah, Jacob, I'm just... First of all, when you get our ambulance subscription, it'll protect you from us coming and billing you out-of-pocket fees. So Crozier didn't bill that properly, and if we get that to our provider, our billing agent, that would get rectified.
Okay, because I called.
You called Crozier?
Well, I called them. Jacob gave me your billing number, and they told me, you know, that we're not, Brookhaven had no records. They didn't have a record.
Well, how it works is, you go to our billing company, and you're a subscriber to our ambulance, and Crozier rides on them. They have a contract with us, so they can't legally bill you. We have to do the, we could, that's how we control the billing. I know Crozier is, Crozier's a for-profit hospital now. And I see the bills they send out, which is crazy. Brookhaven's the lowest biller if you take it to hospital. So we legally have to bill your insurance. We can't get around that. We have to bill your insurance, but we can only get paid for what the insurance company pays us. Some of them pay us forty bucks, some of those pay them eighty bucks, some of us pay the whole bill. So we never know what we're going to get. And if you heard my report, we're out nine hundred and some times already this year. So we have to have backup coverage. So our fire company, for our board of directors, we were able to sign an ambulance agreement with Aston Township, and Crozier gave us a verbal agreement that they would honor that, which is unforeseen. Usually, everybody else, they want their money, no matter what. So we wanted to protect our residents the best we could because we're so busy right now taking people to the hospital that are sick. So we trying to guarantee there's ambulance always coming, whether it's us or Aston or whatever. They honor our subscription, and we honor theirs because we go into their towns to pick their residents up when they're sick. So that's kind of how it works. They can't bill you. And if you're a resident and we aren't able to respond because we're already out on calls and Crozier comes and gets you, they technically have to honor our subscription.
I think two vehicles.
Yeah, it was a paramedic unit and our ambulance.
And then they talk, you know, conversation. But I said that, that Brookhaven's ambulance doesn't have all the right equipment.
Brookhaven's ambulance has all the right equipment. That's paramedic coverage, which is provided by a hospital-based ambulance. That's how that works. We're a BLS ambulance. They meet us at the scene for ALS provider. We pay for staffing, for two ambulances to be staffed during the daytime, which the fire company pays people to be there 24/7 to handle the call volume that we're getting. So we can put ambulances on the street. But it costs a lot of money to do that.
And so I called Crozier.
So we will, don't call Crozier because Crozier is for-profit, and an ambulance bill that we would bill you $600, they're going to bill you $8,000. So there's a big difference there.
When you say subscriber, and you said, can you just clarify that when you, when you get this?
When you're an ambulance, you subscribe to the ambulance, when EMS?
Fun drive.
And that's done, that's done yearly, right? So if you're donating, you now are a subscriber, so you don't get billed as much? Is that...
What happens is if you get billed, anything you're, say, let's just say you get transported to hospital, you're billed $1,200. Your insurance company pays eighty bucks, and you subscribe to that thing for the fee for the year, you're out-of-pocket cost or completely wiped away. We get eighty bucks.
Is there a minimum for the residents to have to subscribe in order to...
Fifty dollars.
So it's basically, you're buying insurance policy. Yeah. To keep, I mean, it's, it's, to me, it's a no-brainer. But people roll the dice, and then when you go there, they say, oh, can I buy your ambulance subscription now after we already took them to the hospital?
Maybe I just never read it clearly. I guess I just thought it was, would you like to donate?
Right. No, that's protecting you from out-of-pocket. Everybody, most people's insurance don't pay a hundred percent.
Right.
So you'll get a bill. Just say if you went to the hospital and our ambulance with a paramedic on board, it's usually about $1,200. They put a monetary on you and everything. So that'll cover you. We give you eighty bucks on that $1,200 ride. That's it. We get what your insurance gives us, and you're clear and free off the book. You know what I mean?
I didn't know that, so that's great to know.
Yeah, that's how, that's how that works, so.
The ambulance is a subscription. The fire company, which we've always donated every year, that's a donation.
That's a donation, yes.
This clearly says subscribe.
Exactly, exactly.
Okay, so what should I do with this bill?
We'll have to, we'll have to get it rectified. I'll have to get it through our billing agent, and then we'll have to, you know, notify Crozier and wash the bill for you.
So I can get your...
Make copies and get it to the...
Yeah. If you can give me some copies of that, that would be great if you drop them off.
I don't have a copy. I just have...
If you drop them off at the station.
Harry will give it to you.
We're a full-service council, as you know.
Hey, Chief.
Harry might drive you home, too.
Yeah. Chief.
Go ahead.
Advise them what happens if you don't subscribe. If you don't subscribe, that fifty dollars, you're liable for that $1,200 bill that your insurance didn't pick up all the way. And if you don't pay that, that remaining balance, you go to a collection agency. It's out of our hands. That's the law. And they'll come after you for that money.
Not on your part. Just as a resident, I wish I knew that because I think I get it, and I think, oh, it's a donation. Maybe you have to...
It's an insurance policy.
Yeah. That's really crazy now.
Those of you who use the ambulance, like you said, that fifty bucks, some bills are more than that.
We go to same, pick the same people up eight times a year, so.
And if they use more medication on you going to the hospital, that bill goes up and up and up. They charge you for a band-aid.
You find that ties this part to the...
Yeah, it doesn't work.
Every mailing that's in there, the ambulance...
Why not?
Probably on our website, too.
All right, you're right.
But...
Thanks, Jay. No fun.
We only send it annually. You can go to the firehouse and get a subscription off the guy that runs the ambulance subscription, and he can write all your information in. But it's, it's basically an insurance policy for everybody.
The second mailing's going out next week for the ambulance.
No, but I always said the donation, but I never actually read.
Guess I better send mine in, then.
Yeah, because you get the blind side because you keep it. So if there's never any questions, that's your thing for the, to show the billing agent, right? I don't, we don't do any of that. That's all third-party for us. I'm just the fire chief, but I always get wrapped up in this stuff.
Okay, there was new residents. Is that going to come out? So do you guys have some of those?
You are not.
If you pay taxes and you're in the mailing, I mean, you're going to get it. It might not be the right name, but there's some correction. It'll be some correction.
New houses, they're doing...
They're Arlington. I don't think they're on the mailing list yet.
Can you leave a few copies up at the office for me?
Yeah, don't get them in the office.
Or is it automatic mailing?
The new addresses aren't on the list yet, Rob.
Where are you at?
The new houses.
New houses.
Arlington.
I can make sure somebody gets them down to you. But they get submitted as your, the tax list goes in, that's when they work.
I didn't understand that. What I understand now is...
You guys never had that anywhere else?
Not that, not that it was ever explained. Like, I just same thing. I was considered a donation.
I was considered a donation.
Yes.
I'm really sorry. I thought it was junk now.
I'm not kidding. I totally did.
Well, send the fifty bucks, Billy. What can we say?
I'm on it now. I don't want to clean. Please, please, tell me it's a challenge.
I didn't know either. I'm lucky, didn't I?
I mean, that's, that's how it works. So it's basically a real cheap insurance policy. You know, you know how the bills are today, so.
Thank you.
Yes. I mean, we're a volunteer fire company, but it's, it's a business. I mean, we've got giant mills like everybody at home. We got big mills to operate every day.
Well, thanks, Harry.
Did that answer your question, sir?
Yes, it did.
Yeah, give me a copy, Steve. Yeah, give me your ambulance subscription, too. Yeah, give me a copy if you got it.
Thank you.
So I won't be calling you back.
Here you go.
Since you're here tonight.
Can he give you a couple of...
I'll shut you off.
No. I have somebody to want to the fire chief.
He's coming back with your copy.
Is that it for that?
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Dave.
Is there anyone else for public discussion? Anyone else for public discussion?
That's child. We get confused all the time. Oh, I'm on Shepherd Street in the middle of the lot.
Public discussion going once, going twice, public discussion sessions closed. Anyone from council or the officials have any further points?
No.
Anyone, anyone? Remember, we're meeting in executive session. With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn. All in favor? All right. Good evening, all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief, can you kill the, or Harry's back. Harry, kill.